All right. Good evening. Checking for an echo, maybe turn off phones if you have it on. I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on March 28th, 2022 at 6:00 to order. Councilman Secunder, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone on council can just make sure that they're Zoom, but I don't hear any echo, so we must be okay. All right, it is public. Sorry, it's time for public comments. Laura, yes, Tiski, Tintikski. Yeah, three minutes, please. Thank you. Doesn't sound like your microphone is on. Can you see if the green light is on, on the microphone? Could someone from staff, please, help? Yeah, and then if you'll speak into it, so at the time, we'll start again, please. Yes, go ahead.
Last October, I presented an Arbogard report regarding the impact of the tree removal on the Winters Chapel Path Phase One project detailing the impact on my property. During that meeting, we agreed that the marked trees would be cut down and the stumps removed using a stump grinder process to minimize damage to the remaining trees and changes to the, and minimize changes to the slope. This process was completed exactly to plan with virtually no damage surrounding, no damage to surrounding vegetation or the slope. However, this morning, the construction crew excavated out the Winters Chapel side of the existing berm as shown in this photo. Basically, what they did, oh, sorry. Basically, what they did is one foot from the HOA fence, they cut, they made a vertical cut down four or five feet, perhaps a little bit more, and then removed all vegetation roots, anything that happened to be there. So now there was just bare dirt. Whether or not they're planning on covering that, I don't know at this time. This obviously has an impact on the, my boundary trees, which I spoke about last time, and those of my neighbors. Arbogard will be coming out again to do another assessment of the damage, but at this point in time, the prescription from last one was, given the size of the trees and distance from the HOA fence, it is not predicted that any construction activities will affect the structural roots plates of the trees as long as the grade near the HOA fence is unchanged. Now, obviously, this is from last October and before any of this started. If any structural root plates are impacted, the trees will be at risk of structural failure and would need to be removed at the project's expense. At this point, and then goes on to say, a boundary tree agreement letter should be created and agreed upon and signed by all parties, which acknowledges the potential impacts to the five boundary trees and outlines any prescriptive preservation treatments if necessary. As I said before, Arbogard is supposed to come out hopefully this week because they're extremely busy. It's hard to get anybody to come out to the house to do an assessment and determine whether or not a prescription can save these five trees or if they will have to be removed. If they would have to be removed, I would hope that the city would take that, take responsibility for that as this is occurring only because of the, of this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin Handel, please. You'll have three minutes. Please just make sure you speak into the mic and the green light is still on.
Madam Mayor, council members, I often wondered what I would say when I, when I stood up here one day. For those of you that may not recognize me, I'm a former Dunwoody officer. I took my oath in this very room. Today, I stand before you troubled, I now serve on the board of a nonprofit and we work with ethical police officers around the country. We've helped to write litigation stemming from my time here, helping to write legislation, excuse me, to protect ethical police officers around the country. And still I find that things happen in the city of Dunwoody that are concerning. The first policy in the handbook reads, employees will work for the common good of the people of Dunwoody and not for any private or public interest. Mayor and council members, we continue to face an issue here. You're losing officers faster than you can get them. People are going back to where they came from, even though they were paid more here. And everyone wonders why. People say maybe it was the great resignation. People don't go return where they came from because of a great resignation. This week alone, prisoner transport officer Brian Bolden was terminated. He was initially investigated for public criticism, violating that policy. Brian Bolden was terminated this week. The outcome of that phony investigation into Brian Bolden by Chief Billy Grogan displays the blatant misuse of authority that Grogan routinely practices. He began investigating Bolden while lacking any factual information other than what he had heard from others. As shown by him citing a public criticism policy violation initially. Interestingly, in the final moments of Bolden's employment, Grogan revealed that Bolden actually did not violate that policy or any of the numerous criminal statutes that Grogan said that he did. So today I stand before all of you, ask the city manager Eric Linton and each council member to ensure that whistleblowers who did nothing more than protect the citizens of Dunwoody were given a fighting chance to keep their jobs. In the face of a definitely authoritarian regime, we as whistleblowers face off with the police chief whose track record now speaks for itself. He allowed a sexual predator to resign instead of taking his badge or his gun. He protected a sergeant on probation for DUI and caused many other issues that have littered news outlets across the nation. He long ago lost the confidence of his officers and you can tell by the dwindling numbers of employment here. And it's time for the citizens of Dunwoody and for the leaders of Dunwoody to take a stand against that. Your officers, your family, and your friends all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Singleton Wells. Say, if you'll just make sure the green light's on and that you speak into the microphone, please. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, I want to start with the fact that I have the utmost respect for your office. I know most of you personally. But as you know, I'm a community activist here in Dunwoody, so when you see me normally, there's trouble somewhere. I've been a Dunwoody resident for 20-plus years. As a community activist, it is my job to be a voice for those who go unheard and to make a stand for those whose problems go unaddressed and ignored. It is my job to fight for needed change so that this community that I love can thrive. Effective leadership can spot problems and fix them without major casualties. They openly accept suggestions and wisdoms from those around them to make sure to create and maintain a healthy, safe, and successful environment for those around them. After doing my research and speaking with multiple victims and whistleblowers, I have determined that the Dunwoody Police Department has a problem with leadership. When we start to intimidate and incriminate people who are brave enough to speak up about problems that are going on in the workplace, it's time for a change. Our Dunwoody police officers deserve to work in a place where they feel safe and heard. They shouldn't feel excluded or attacked for making mention of problems or crimes that they have witnessed or experienced in the workplace. They shouldn't feel alienated from their other officers for telling the truth. They shouldn't feel a need to pick sides. All of this distracts from the very important work that our officers have to do on a daily basis. If our current leadership cannot objectively and transparently address the problems going on in this department, it is time for them to gracefully resign and allow the city of Dunwoody to hire someone who's able to do that job effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch, you'll have three minutes. And again, just make sure you're speaking into the microphone and the green light is on.
Hey, as you've heard, there's obviously a growing chorus of people that are saying that our police chief Grogan should resign or be fired. In our city council, y'all are not helpless. I know it's our city manager, Eric Linton, who has the responsibility of hiring and firing, but if Eric Linton does not do his job, you should fire Eric Linton. Your hands are not tied. You can take action. As you know, we're already approaching half million dollars in personnel costs since the Fidel incident. Most are not covered by insurance, but what about our premiums? Well, this is not going away. There's going to be more lawsuits, all because of our police department's problems at the top. Let's remind everyone that Chief Grogan and our city were notified of Fidel's perverted and illegal behaviors before there were any lawsuits, but our police chief ignored them. And we learned, thanks to WXIA, about Fidel being able to resign without being fired. No investigation on him, except when the chief did finally do an investigation, he conducted it himself. Remember, he was, our police chief was a named defendant in the lawsuits, so he investigated himself. Doesn't that strike you as bizarre? Is that, is that the way you want our city to be run? I sure don't. Most recent news of Brian Bolden being fired, this time it was because he was found guilty of disclosing a public document to the public and for not disclosing that he had a side job. Of course, you all know about all the side jobs that our police chief has, where he even makes money and monetizes off the fact that he is Dunwoody's police chief on his side jobs. Is that proper? Thank goodness for Brian Bolden, and I applaud whistleblowers. Thank goodness for them because I don't think we were going to put out a press release talking about our public spokesman for the police department getting his second DUI. Now, remember, on his first DUI, Robert Parsons lied to the state patrol officer. Did Parsons get fired for that? Nope, not at all. Minor a little reprimand. I only have a few seconds left, but I just want to say, you can't say back the blue when you don't back the blue. I mean, think about it. This council just sits there and says, well, it's a personality issue. We can't do anything about it. But we have some of the highest pay, some of the highest benefits afforded in this metro Atlanta, but people do not want to work for our police department. There were times last year where there were only one or two officers on the clock patrolling our city. That's horrible. It was not because of pandemic, it was because officers don't want to be here, and I don't blame them. This is not the way to run a city and to ensure our citizens' safety. Take action. Eric Lynn, I'm looking at you. What are you doing about it? Nothing, apparently. I hope you do for the sake of our city. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ginger, can you check online, please? It's Ginger. Wait, I think I asked Dustin. Dustin, I think you can hear me. Can you?
I'm sorry, I'm here, Madam Mayor. If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry.
Next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the two items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by John, second by Rob. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further, oh, anyone against, say no. Hearing none, the motion carries.
Mayor, moving to business items. Number five is the second read of RZ 2104, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for Landlaw 344, District 18, in consideration of zoning case RZ 2104 for 4553 North Shallowford Road to authorize a variance from the setback requirements. Madeline Smith.
Evening, Mayor and City Council.
Technology.
Let me upload the plan again one more time. My apologies.
Okay, either you need to make sure the microphone's on or you, I just did it myself. Make sure it's on, please.
So the case on the agenda this evening is 4553 North Shallowford Road. This is for a new Emory Medical Building. We reviewed this in detail at the last meeting, so tonight I'm just going to go over quickly what changes have been made since you last saw this plan. And just to address some of the comments that were made at the last meeting, there were several concerns brought up. The first one was related to sidewalks along North Shallowford Road. Michael Smith did clarify that the reason they're not being required to install the sidewalks as part of this construction project is that, is it because it's part of a, a larger overall streetscape project that Public Works is doing in that area? And so that will be forthcoming. And then the sidewalk along Pernosial Court will be completed as part of this construction project, so they will be updating the streetscape along Pernosial and the city's going to update the streetscape along North Shallowford. Another concern that was brought up at the last meeting was the parking deck screening. And so the applicant and I worked on some language to formalize that requirement, and I have it up here on the screen for you all to review. And the last concern that was brought up was regarding pedestrian connectivity. The applicant updated their site plan. The one major change that occurred is that there is a brand-new sidewalk connection from North Shallowford Road to the existing ambulatory surgery center. You can see on the top right-hand, that is the site plan, and it's showing an arrow where the connection is going to be. And then I just pulled this image from Google Street View to show you where that connection would go in. So if you're looking at the surgical center from North Shallowford, it's going to be towards the left-hand side of the, the front of the building. So these are the only three, or excuse me, the only two changes that were made. There was also some notes on the site plan regarding a raised crosswalk along Pernosial Court connecting to the park. The applicant has stated that they are going to coordinate with Michael Smith and Public Works on whether or not a raised crosswalk there is feasible. And so overall, our recommendation is approval of the rezoning and the concurrent variance based on the exhibits and conditions provided by staff. And we have updated the conditions again with that language on the previous screen and also updated the site plan, showing the notes regarding the pedestrian connectivity. I'm available if you all have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions, John?
Madeline, thank you for the presentation. Currently, that property that we are looking at, or actually the properties we are looking at, are owned by two separate individuals. They are being zoned into one zoning classification as one project. If for any reason this project falls through the wayside in the sense of the approval of the sale of the property, how does that affect this rezoning and how does that rezoning move forward with two different property owners? Is there anything we need to be concerned about from that perspective?
Not that I'm aware of. So the rezoning, it's conditioned to the site plan. And so what's shown on the site plan is what can be built there regardless of who owns the property.
Okay, so then the current, if the sale were to fall through, then the current owner of the property could build what's then being rezoned at that point. But I get it. So there's, it's, nothing can be done except for what's approved, and it's just a matter of that perspective. I was just wondering from the long-term perspective of the, oh, and I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what happens, if anything, if the sale falls through. But there's really no detriment as far as you can tell.
No, sir.
Okay. That was my main question. I thank you for the changes, the sidewalk and the other things that we discussed, so thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you again. Thank you for adding the sidewalk access off of NoShelfer. That's really appreciated. And I think we're going to try to work on potential ADA compliance on that versus the stairway. I saw, I recall an email. Was, was the, is that what is going to be the approach?
So there is a grade change there, and as far as ADA access, my condition that I've written isn't specific about that. If you would like to be more specific, I'd recommend amending the condition.
And the applicant's here, he may want to add something.
Let's get your thoughts. I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Good evening. Alan Wazinski with Pre-Dove Land Planning. So the Public Works Director and I did speak about the ADA accessibility from North Shallowford. At the last council meeting, it was suggested to look at making that North Shallowford ADA compliant because of the MARTA stop that's south of the property. We looked at the MARTA maps and there's an additional MARTA stop just north of the Pernosial intersection, at North Shallowford, that if somebody was disabled to enter this site, remember, we're trying to move the address to Pernosial. They would go to the second MARTA stop and then they would have curb ramps and the ability to roll into the site without using the stairs.
Great, great. That sounds good. Again, thank you for the pit access. Thank you for the consideration for the race crossings, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for making those changes and getting this through the process. Any further questions or comment? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you both. We look forward to this project.
Item number six is approval of construction contract for intersection improvements at Shambly Dunwoody Road and Womack Road. Subject to final legal review.
Sharon, I hate to interrupt, but we're struggling to hear you. Is your?
It's on.
Okay, that's better. Thank you.
Closer, is that better?
Yes. Do you want to read it one more time, please?
I will. Number six is approval of construction contract for intersection improvements at Shambly Dunwoody Road and Womack Road, subject to final legal review. I guess it's Michael Smith.
Thank you.
Yes, the council discussed this project at the last meeting, and I think the main question that we had to go back and answer was looking at making the sidewalk a six-foot sidewalk on Shambly Dunwoody. And we've looked at that and we, we think we can, we can make it six feet and then meander around the power poles that are out there where there's a, where there's a power pole, we'll have to move it, meander it closer to the road and maybe eliminate the landscape buffer. But we can, we think we'll be able to get six feet all the way down through there.
Buddy, have any questions? I'll start on this end. Tom, anybody?
No, no questions. Just I appreciate you look, going back and looking at the width of the sidewalk and finding a way to make that work. So thank you very much.
Stacy, Joe.
Just for, just to make sure when we're going to be adding the right turn on rate, we'll be available from Womack, turning right northbound onto Shambly Dunwoody with the end of this, correct? That'll be available because the, the site right now in the line.
Yeah, we're not adding a right turn lane in this project, but you will be able to turn right on red.
Okay, all right. I just want to hopefully make sure that we're also taking, obviously, pedestrian crossings into account and making sure that it's really evident to motorists because obviously with the longer term, we got that whole Shambly Dunwoody corridor to make sure it's pedestrian-friendly and traffic calm. Okay, thanks.
John?
Yes, the approval item actually says, subject to final legal review. Question for the city manager, is this past final legal review? Ken?
What up? I'm sorry.
And just for one second, just in case, because I don't think we ever made a big announcement. This is Ken Bernard. He's our new attorney, city attorney. So this may be the, I'm not sure if you've spoken in a meeting before, but go ahead.
I try not to speak, Mayor. Thank you. So when y'all approve things, sometimes there is a delay between the actual final version coming across our desk. In order to keep the staff moving contracts along, they put that provision in at my request so that if we see something structural that's a problem, we can make that change. We will never make a substantive change, price, scope, whatever the criteria comes from staff. But what I realize, we can hang them up in my office and they never get to y'all, or they can go through the process, and sometimes these things, especially when you're dealing with a big third party that's also got a lawyer, there's some language saying jurisdiction, venue, legal things that we want to protect the city by. So I've asked all the staff working with Sharon, when the department heads bring a contract, move it through the system, put subject to final legal review. It doesn't mean that we haven't pre-vetted it, but the final thing that's going to be signed, I've got to sign it anyway before the mayor signs. It just allows me to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. We're not making substantive changes. We're making only legal changes, or if there's an error, it allows me to correct that.
Thank you, sir. As long as that meets purchasing requirements, it's good with the city manager. I'm, I'm fine with that. It's just it's on a number of items on today's agenda, and we haven't had that clarification previously, so I thank you for the explanation.
Mayor and council, that I've worked with John Gates and Eric on coming up with this so we can keep things moving.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by, oops, second by Tom. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven is contract award for sidewalk construction at Brooklyn Park, subject to final legal review. Brett Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We discussed this. Better. We discussed this item at the last council meeting. This is a contract for blunt construction to build the sidewalk from the Gray Lawn Parking Lot down to the amphitheater and at a stairwell where people are coming up into the amphitheater. We're requesting a contract not to exceed $69,105 to blunt construction. This includes a contingency. There was a question at the last council meeting about the width of the stairs, and we did verify that it is 60 watt. And the actual stairway coming up the hillside will have landings, so there'll be stairs and landings just because of the turn in the stairwell with matching railing. And we'll also add the fence and barricades along the drive lane for the sidewalk.
Anybody have questions?
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or discussion? Because that was, seeing none, thank you for bringing this to us. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now it's time for Michael Smith. So whenever you're ready, Michael. This is just discussion, right, Sharon? So you don't have to read it. Thank you. This is, yeah. The conceptual design. What is wrong? The conceptual design for Village Crossroads, Shambly Dunwoody, from Womack to Roberts Corridor. There we go.
Okay. So we're here tonight to talk about the.
And Michael, it's, I think it's really noisy, and so I think you have to lean into the microphones. It's showing up. I'm sorry, it's showing up, but it's really noisy back here, so maybe lean in. Thank you.
Okay. Here to present the conceptual plan for Shambly Dunwoody Road and Dunwoody Village between Womack Road and Robert Strive. This project originated out of the original Dunwoody Village master plan, which called for a more walkable and bikeable village. That theme for the village has continued through to recent master plan updates and our transportation plan for this project. This is a, a map out of the transportation plan, and there's a couple of projects recommended here. One is for bike and pedestrian improvements, as shown on green and green on the map for Shambly Dunwoody Road, and also an intersection or intersection improvements at Womack Road and at Mount Vernon Road. And of course, we just approved the project, the construction for Womack Road, and we'll talk a little bit more about Mount Vernon intersection later in the presentation. And while I have the map up here, you can see currently that the four approaches from each direction into the village currently. the four approaches from each direction into the village currently have existing bike lanes. But there's a, a gap in the bike accommodations through the village. As far as the existing sidewalks in the village, it's, it's very, it's variable. The good news is there is sidewalk on both sides throughout this corridor. But as you can see in the, the foreground here, we have some narrower sidewalks on the left side of the picture. There's a decent buffer there from the roadway. And then you move further back into the picture, we have a newer, wider sidewalk with a buffer and street trees. But on the other side, we have narrower sidewalks and a narrow buffer and some of the trees are on the backside of the sidewalk. So there, as I said, they're continuous, but and there's also issues with old curb ramps and a meeting American with Disabilities Act requirements. So just not a very consistent sidewalk type through the village. And we talked about the lack of accommodations for bicycles along the section of Shambly Dunwoodie. We do, when we repaved the road a few years ago, we did get a section of bike lanes coming south from Roberts to just south of Dunwoodie Village Parkway. Which you can see here, it, it ends south of Dunwoodie Village Parkway. And then looking at transit, bus route, MARTA bus route one fifty does travel on the section of Shambly Dunwoodie between Dunwoodie Village Parkway and Mount Vernon Road. There's three stops along that section. Two of them current, already have bus shelters. And the third stop, it just has a sign currently. Uh, we looked closely at the traffic conditions on the corridor and evaluated a lot of different options as to try to relieve congestion. The graph here shows, it kind of sums up the problem really that we're dealing with is the, the blue line is the number of vehicles per hour that a typical two-lane road can carry without congestion. And then the orange line is the, the hourly volume on a typical weekday on Shambly Dunwoodie Road. So you can see between seven and nine in the morning, the traffic picks up and it's, it's right around that saturation level just above. And then at mid-morning, it drops below that. And then around lunchtime, it starts picking up and by three to five in the afternoon, it's well above the, the level that could be expected to move freely on a two-lane road. So it's, it's really as much, it's a traffic volume problem more so than like an intersection or, or signal timing problem. And I, we'll come back to the, to the traffic later. But one more thing on that, Mount Vernon is kind of the key intersection being a major crossroad. So that, you know, the, how the traffic flows at Mount Vernon kind of controls how it flows on the rest of Shambly Dunwoodie. So when we talk about traffic later, we looked at a lot of options.
Is this slots? I'm sorry to interrupt. Is it supposed to be blank?
I'm getting.
Okay, sorry.
Just haven't hit the button to the.
Rush. I just wanted to make sure it was supposed to be blank because I didn't know if you could see what we were not seeing.
There we go. So looking at the, just the corridor and the proposed improvements that are in the concept plan, starting from the the edge of the right-of-way and working inward, the concept includes wider sidewalks and then a landscape buffer of street trees with decorative pedestrian lighting that would separate the pedestrians from the cyclists who would be on a one-way cycle track in each direction, on each side of the road. The cycle track would be raised to the level of the sidewalk and separated from car traffic by a three-foot buffer and then the, the curb. We first presented the recommendation for a cycle track on this corridor to the council back in twenty twenty. And since the vision for the Village Master Plan is for pedestrian oriented and development and shopfront along Shambly Dunwoodie, we, we thought it was really important to separate the pedestrians and the, and the cyclist. For the roadway itself, the biggest change would, would be to remove one lane southbound as you go in south of Mount Vernon. So, um, if you're going south through the village after you cross, cross Mount Vernon, there's two lanes now. This would go to one lane and, and that's mainly to make room for the proposed improvements and keep it in the right-of-way. North of Mount Vernon, where the concept shows still one travel lane in each direction. And we're showing a landscape median. Here it's shown in the picture here, it wouldn't be continuous throughout. It would be in places where we don't need a turn, a center turn lane. There are a few places such as in front of the farmhouse where the right-of-way is not as wide. So we have a, what we call a constrained section here at the bottom. The biggest difference between, in those areas where we don't have as much right-of-way, we're showing the, the tree buffer between the sidewalk and the cycle track would be, would not be included so that the improvements could fit with less impact. Looking, starting at the south end at Womack and kind of going north from there, looking at, in a overhead view. The, uh, the roadway is the dark gray and then there's a thin lighter gray on each side, which is the cycle track. Then I, uh, the green would be the landscape buffer and the yellow lines are the new sidewalk. So you can see in most places, oh, and the red line, the, the light blue line that you, you can see kind of in the background is the existing right-of-way. And the red, where there's red lines, those, that would be additional right-of-way that would be needed. You can see in most places that proposed right-of-way line is pretty close within a few feet of the existing. And that's something we may be able to tighten up even more if, once we get into more detailed design. But we're showing potentially small slices of right-of-way that would be needed here. And then moving north to the Mount Vernon intersection. Uh, we, we're showing here an additional left turn, a second left turn lane as you're going north, turning home to Mount Vernon, going west. This was something that the traffic model showed would decrease the delay at the intersection by about fifteen percent and it, it fits pretty well, especially if you take out the second southbound lane. It fits pretty well within the existing roadway and right-of-way. So we're, so we did include that traffic improvement in the plan. And I'll, I'll come back and talk about the Mount Vernon intersection more later. Then moving to the other side of Mount Vernon. Zoom in here. This, here you can see at the farmhouse, that, that green buffer between the, the cycle track and the sideways, sidewalk is, has been taken out from Mount Vernon up to just south of Nandina. That's where the right-of-way is really tight. You can see even with the, uh, even with that, the proposed right-of-way line is right up against the edge of the parking lot for the, the businesses across from the farmhouse. We also are showing at the top of the screen, Nandina, where it intersects with Mount Vernon, we're showing that turning at more and coming in at more of a right angle. It would require just a little triangle of right-of-way there. But feel like that would help reinforce the stop condition at that intersection and make it easier for drivers to see when they're turning and, and also hopefully make the pedestrian more, more visible at that location. Right now it comes in at more of an angle and people are looking back and trying to merge in with traffic in it. They're not necessarily watching for pedestrians crossing there. And we move further north in front of the Shops of Dunwoodie. This is another location there in front of Fresh Market that we're showing not having the, a new tree buffer. There's, there are already those mature trees. They are behind the sidewalk and the goal would be to not, to minimize our footprint so that we could potentially put the sidewalk in front of those trees and, and save them. As we get further into the design, we'll, we'll have an arborist do a full assessment of the health and longevity of those trees. But here we're showing that we would not add a landscape buffer so that we could try to save those. Here also, you can see some of the areas where we've taken out the center turn lane and put in a landscape median going up towards Dunwoodie Village Parkway. And then final, the final section going up to Roberts. It's similar to the last section. The one thing to point out here is we do, there is a bump out on the public side of the road that we're showing there. There's a, there is one large, mature hardwood there that we've tried to widen the landscape buffer and go around and bump the sidewalk around the backside of it, which would require a little bit of right-of-way from the, from the public shopping center. But that's potentially another tree that we would try to save. This is a, a rendering of what it could look like looking north towards Mount Vernon. We've got some of the future development in the background as recommended by the, the master plan with the buildings pulled up close to the street. Now going back to the, the traffic improvements that we looked at. And I said, Mount Vernon was the, kind of the key intersection. And so we looked at a lot of different scenarios here. We did, we didn't develop a, a concept that had four lanes on Chaimwood Dunwoodie. You know, we, we looked at the traffic. It does, it, it does justify it, but we didn't, we didn't look at that because that's not something the Village Master Plan called for. So we did look at a, a number of options just to do, to make improvements at the Mount Vernon intersection. And one I mentioned earlier that we did include was the second left from Shambly Dunwoodie going north onto Mount Vernon. We also, here, we also looked at closing Nandina. I think that was a, a recommendation in the original master plan. We looked at doing that. Nandina does take a lot of the right-turning traffic off of Shambly Dunwoodie. So if you close it, you really need two right turn lanes at the intersection to account for that. And you can see, then you do get into the, to those businesses. And to do that, you would, you would have to acquire those two parcels in the Nandina Triangle to, to be able to make all that fit. There would be some developable property left over after you did that, but we, you know, you can see that it, it would, it would work okay, but it, it would have significant impacts and cost. And then going a little bit further, we, in addition to closing Nandina and adding those right turn lanes, you know, one of the big problems, if you drive through the village anytime during the afternoon rush hour, you've probably seen how the traffic backs up on Mount Vernon trying to make that left on the Shambly Dunwoodie going north. A lot of times it backs up past Nandina and backs up out of the turn lane. So we looked at also adding a second left turn lane from, from Mount Vernon onto Shambly Dunwoodie going north. And that would, that would solve that problem of the, the traffic backing up there. But again, it would require acquiring those two parcels. Also, by having two left turn lanes, you would have to add a second lane going north on, on Shambly Dunwoodie. And that would have to go up to at least the Shops of Dunwoodie signal, but possibly all the way up to Roberts. So, once you get on a Shambly Dunwoodie, that extra lane doesn't add a lot of additional right-of-way impacts, but you still do have the, the impacts here at Nandina. We, you'd have to acquire those parcels. And then lastly, we looked at a roundabout at the intersection. And it would have to be, because of the traffic, it would have to be two lanes. And it would work, but it's, you know, it, it requires even more property. At a minimum, you'd have to probably buy out three commercial properties to be able to fit something like this. And then you'd, you'd also, and possibly even more to try to shift it away from the farmhouse. And then the last thing from a traffic standpoint, we did look at Roberts, the Roberts intersection. Just to see what a roundabout would look like there. That, that traffic, that intersection operates okay most times of the day, but in the morning, we do have this, you know, there's traffic coming in on Shambly Dunwoodie and traffic coming in on Roberts. And they're both trying to go south and the Roberts, the Shambly Dunwoodie traffic can turn right on red. And so they kind of fill up the gap. And then, so when it turns green for Roberts, they, they don't have anywhere to go. So we looked at a roundabout, that would probably help meter that traffic a little bit, kind of people could go through there alternating and letting each other in. And so it, it would probably, it would, looks like it would be an improvement. It does have some right-of-way impacts. We, we looked, it would work as a single lane roundabout initially, might, maybe long-term, it would need to be two lanes, but it would be okay, single lane in the short term. We included that as part of the, the comment and, and planning for this project. But if, if that's something the city wanted to do, we would recommend that probably be split out as a separate project. The, the corridor project's gonna be big enough already. And so that would make sense to make that a separate project. We gathered, over a month, a month period, we gathered, uh, public input through a project page on the city's website. We had over a thousand views. There was an informational video that got over three thousand views. And then we received eighty-two written comments on the project. And, and the, from the written comments, we received about seventy, seventy-six percent showed support for the, or expressed support for the project. We asked, we did a, a little survey, asked some questions. One of the questions we asked was what should be the primary consideration for the project? And it, it looks like we captured both ends of the opinion spectrum here because safety and accommodation of all the road users receive the most responses as being the highest priority. But at the same time, it also received by far the most votes as being the lowest priority. So it looks like we got both, both ends there. And the, the cost shows as a priority here, but I'll, I'll show some other things in a minute that there, there's some conflicting views on the cost. We also asked to rank the proposed improvements in order of priority. And the, interestingly, the, even though there was seventy-six percent support for the project, traffic congestion relief was ranked as a, as one of the top two priorities by the most responses, followed by wider sidewalks and bicycle accommodations. We, we dove a little deeper into the, tried to drill down into the tech, uh, traffic question. And we asked what people's level of tolerance was for the existing traffic in the village. And close to ninety percent of the respondents were somewhere between it's tolerable to that they avoid the area when possible. So probably some opinions right on either side of the middle of, of whether it's tolerable or not. Look, so we looked at some of the comments of, of the people that said they avoid it when possible to see what they were saying about it. And just, there's a few shown here that study recognizes the main problem, but proposes no solution. For as long as traffic is a disaster, people will avoid or minimize their usage in this area. But then there were also people that said, I'm not in. But then there were also people that said, I'm not in favor of any changes that would encourage more commuters to pass through the village solely as a way to get to perimeter. So of the comments, for just looking at the avoid when possible, more of the comments were about doing more for the, the traffic. But there were some people that said they don't really want to change it. And then we asked about burying utilities because that comes up on these projects and, you know, it was discussed with the Georgetown project and it's been discussed with the village before. So we asked people, what percentage of the overall project cost would you be willing to support, you know, burying the utilities? And a high number of people, at least the ones that responded to the survey, said that they supported spending us, you know, 30%, as much as 30% or more of the cost of the project vary utilities. So it, so when I say earlier, cost was a something that people said was a high priority, but it seems that the people that responded to the survey placed a lot of value in, in burying the utilities. And then the last thing, the, the public art has become more of a focus for the city. We asked what percentage of the project should go towards public art? And, you know, most people said around 1%, which I think is consistent with what something the Arts Council has recently, uh, uh, recommended for city projects. So, um, as a whole, the survey responses showed strong support for the conceptual plan. And there were some differing opinions on how much should be done to address traffic. The, the design team acknowledged that, you know, the proposed plan has been developed, that has been developed, does not provide major improvements that offer traffic relief, but in the end, we came back to what the prime, you know, one of the primary goals that was stated in the master plan 10 years ago, which was to make the village more walkable and bikeable. That's the end of the presentation, so we can welcome the feedback.
Can you remind us before I'll let our bias talk, but when the study was done, when the questions were asked?
The survey questions?
Was recent, right?
Yes, it was February.
Okay, I just wanted to place it in the scope of pandemic traffic, but the village always feels like there's traffic, so. Go ahead Catherine.
Hi Michael, thank you, I'm very excited about the project. You showed two alternatives that you didn't choose, would either of them be more efficient for the traffic, any of the two?
The, the ones at Mount Vernon, the two. They, they, yes, they both, they do both show improved traffic flow.
I mean, more so than what you proposed, more so than the one proposed.
Yes, in addition to what we proposed, we, the one we included offered some benefit for the kind of the least cost, least impact. The other, the other alternatives would add additional benefit on top of what the one we've included.
So additional traffic flow benefit where you said you're, you focused on walkability as your primary driver?
Yes, and, and the, yeah, and, and it's, you know, that's a tough balancing act, I think, and that's, you know, maybe more of a policy question of, you know, how far do you want to go to address traffic in the village? And I, I, I just wanted to, you know, I don't want anybody to get the impression that this project is fixing traffic flow.
Okay, uh, a detailed question, if I'm traveling north on Shambly Dunwoody, I have passed the Chevron, next turn right, which would go into the Fresh Market, your first opportunity into there. That is, it's too narrow for easy flow, so that that slowdown pushes back into the intersection. Is there potential to widen that to make it easier for somebody to turn right in there to keep the traffic going?
So you're talking about the turning right into, at the signal there by the Chevron?
Yes.
We can look at, you know, making that kind of a smoother curve there so that you can turn easier. I mean, we could look at improvements to that driveway opening, yes.
Yeah, I think you're gonna want to do that. And then the next turn you pointed out, it looks like there are a lot of lefts out of that, so then it's the next northern part to get out of Fresh Market, people make a lot of lefts out of there, but now there'd be a median, do you predict any problems, I guess, flow in the parking lot area when people can't go left there?
What the, the, with the median, what we were trying to do, you know, both is make it look nicer and offer some potential, uh, traffic calming by kind of narrowing the, the feel of the roadway, but also try, without closing curb cuts that could potentially, you know, closing them all together and potentially impacting business, we're looking at maybe limiting some of the movements, they would still have access, but by limiting those movements, it, it could cut down on some of the conflicts for the pedestrians and cyclists crossing those driveways. Because, because ideally, you know, we would space those driveways out more, but, but, but they're existing now and without getting into impacting businesses. That's one of the things with the median is to try to restrict some of those movements and reduce some of those conflicts.
Yeah, agreed, I think that'll be a good idea, but then now these left turn people are gonna go back to that intersection I just talked about. And maybe that's a shopping center question, but the way people line up to go out of that, now they want to make a left, they're coming in at, at two different directions, one from the Fresh Market parking lot and then one more back from the other shops. There's a flow problem that should be addressed if you're gonna put more cars in there to go left. So now to go southbound on Shambly Dunwoody.
Yeah, yeah, and those are, you know, some of those things like exactly where the median is, where it starts and stops, that, those are things we need to work out in final design and have, you know, conversations with the property owners and look at those impacts, so um, that's definitely something we'll take a look at.
The Roberts Roundabout is very appealing to me, I like the aesthetics of having that be an entry point into a village area. I like taking out a light, it'll be more efficient. Tell me what that does for pedestrians, because I'm not too familiar with that, right now they have this nice light where they can get across, is it now much more dangerous for pedestrians?
A lot of the, the studies on roundabouts is that, that, you know, actually it reduces the number of conflict points for pedestrians. Because you, they cross, you may not be able to see it well in the picture, but they cross a little bit ahead of or beyond the roundabout, you know, where before the road starts widening out to go around the roundabout, they cross back there and so, and there's usually a kind of a refuge in the middle, so when they're crossing, there really is only one conflict point, whereas at a traditional traffic signal, you've got multiple conflict points because you have people going through and then turn, you know, left turns, right turns. So I think, you know, the roundabout reduces those conflict points and should be you know, better for pedestrians really than a traffic signal.
Okay, uh, now this would be painful to get through. How bad, dare I ask, is the utility relocation and like the length of this project?
But those are more details that we'd have to work through, but it, it, there probably will be significant utility relocation, even if we don't bury the utilities. And it'll be, it's, it'll be a big project and I think, you know, based on the, the feedback we get and the next steps, you know, one thing we may look at is if it makes sense to break the project up into sections, sections, you know, maybe south of Mount Vernon versus north of Mount Vernon. Those are all things that we need to work out.
Okay, and last comment on art, um, we've got an opportunity with all the many utility boxes that are on that street. If you drove there and looked utility boxes, you'd be counting to 10, 15. So that's my plug for art on the road, thank you.
Rob, if, I'm just going, I'm sorry. Right, nope, you're right, I needed to look at you, sorry.
So I, I'm gonna circle back to this, um, the, the roundabout, the kind of the rejected option at Roberts and Shambly, because I also like that right there, I think that that angle of that intersection actually works, I like it as an entry point. What kind of cost differential, just relatively speaking, are we looking at for something like that versus what you have in the concept right now?
We haven't costed that out yet, but, and we're not, we're not saying don't do the roundabout at Roberts, we just, what I was saying is that you probably want to do it as a separate project from the corridor, so it, it's a viable option. You know, we, whereas with Mount Vernon, we didn't include some of those other options in the concept with this, we're saying this is kind of an add-on to the concept. So, but, you know, if that's something the council wanted to move forward with, we could, you know, advance that as a separate project, get a cost estimate and everything.
I had just, to, to me, that, that looks like a spot where it might work well, so I, I would be in favor of that. You know, beyond that, I just have the general observation that I think aesthetics are going to be really important, this is going to be, you know, we're, we're trying to build kind of you know, a very aesthetically pleasing part of the city here, there's a lot of interest in this part of the city, so I like the idea of burying utilities, I, I like the idea of public art, I like the idea of making this look really nice. To kind of maybe foster the next step on how this might develop and redevelop. The roundabout was the only question I had for now, I might have another question in a minute.
That's fine, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Michael, yeah, that, I'm excited about this project, uh, and the potential impact it could have on the area, obviously. Um, I'm gonna keep the roundabout theme going, so it's, um, excuse me. But personally, in general, all things being equal, I'm a fan of roundabouts, I actually grew up in the Northeast where they're a lot more common than they are down here. Their very efficient way of moving traffic was, have, have we done any modeling, traffic modeling to, to, to gauge how much more efficient the intersection might be with a roundabout versus any of the other alternatives?
Very preliminary at this point, we, we need to do some more before we would fully commit to it, but preliminarily, it looks favorable.
Okay, yeah, I, I would uh, join on with Catherine and Rob, as, as far as I would support looking into that as a, as a, as an option. And I, personally, I would like to be considered at, at both of those intersections. I know the Mount Vernon, uh, Shambly Dunwoody intersection is far more complicated with, with uh, right of way acquisition or even property acquisition, and it might become prohibitively expensive. Uh, but if we're acquiring right of way anyway, uh, for some of the other alternatives, the impacts to those businesses might require a total taking of those properties anyway, so, and, and in, in essence, if we could structure this in a way that as you mentioned, there would be usable space outside of, you know, if, if Nandina goes away, in essence, those bus, businesses could get pushed back, of course, they would have to be rebuilt. Um, but perhaps that could be staged in a way that construction can start on those new businesses and then before they're torn down to minimize the impact to the existing businesses. I, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of interfering involved that I might not be considering, but, um, but I would be really interested in, in understanding how that might affect, because as we all know, that intersection there, as you mentioned, it's, it's the major choke point and and having that there, and as you mentioned also, I do agree that the, the safety of roundabouts are a lot safer, uh, because as you mentioned, there's no left-hand turns and that's, that's a major conflict point is this left turn, so I, again, I don't know what, how much more expensive that becomes by doing that, I'm sure it is significant, but I would like to have that information so we can make an informed decision. And, and as far as, again, I'll just echo Rob's comment too, is about the public art, we actually have a major art center along this route. You know, Spruil Center for Art is right there, uh, at the start of this project, so it would be, it would be terrific to integrate and perhaps partner with them, especially along that section in front of the art center, we could just have a, a major art thing there and continue it up into the village, maybe have some, some sort of arch trail that takes you to the village, I think that would be exciting, but uh, but yeah, but thank you, I'm, I'm excited about this and I'll let someone else comment, thanks.
Stacy, anything?
Couple of questions, um, the, I know, one of the major problems that we have is the left-hand turn from Mount Vernon going north in Shambly Dunwoody. And I know one of the solutions was the, the double left-hand turn lane, but that's a huge, huge change. I, I get, and perhaps I had stepped out, I didn't understand like with the non-double left-hand turn, what improvement is done, is the left-hand turn extended, or is it just?
It's just left as it is.
Okay.
Like, like this on Mount Vernon, there wouldn't be anything new on Mount Vernon.
Okay.
And, and the proposed concept.
So in your estimation, with not making huge changes to the traffic flow in the double lanes, how is traffic flow improved, not made great, but improved with this?
Well, adding the, we think adding the second northbound left on the Mount Vernon right of way knocks, makes it 15% less delay for the whole intersection.
Okay.
You'll still have that backup in the afternoon on Mount Vernon. And then, you know, you still got more traffic on Shambly Dunwoody than it can handle, you know, for times in the afternoon mainly. But then also, you know, it reducing some of those ability, the ability to turn left in and out of every driveway along there will help some with traffic flow. So those are probably the, the main things that, that the plan would, would help with.
And kind of to piggyback on Catherine, with that turn into the Chevron, another point where people might be forced to is on the exit down to Dunwoody Village Parkway to then make a left onto Shambly, southbound Shambly Dunwoody by, um, in between Melon Mushroom and First Citizens. So you might actu- actually kind of need to look at, I don't know if you can extend that left-hand turn lane anymore before you bump up to the driveway by Marlowe's.
Oh, on Dunwoody Village.
On, on Dunwoody Village Parkway to make a south left-hand turn with a light onto Shambly Dunwoody instead of having to come out into traffic. That might just be something that, you know, as we plan, you're gonna have to look at that.
Yeah, we'd have to get more right of way on Dunwoody Village Parkway to, to add a, to lengthen that term.
Just thoughts?
Joe?
Hey, Michael, have a seat. Thanks, this is a great, I've got, I've got several notes here, so this is gonna be, it's not in all order here, but think about the intent, we're gonna be, think about the future of what Dunwoody Village can be, what the aspiration is, what could be there, and this is laying the stage for that. So think about the intent of arriving to a city jewel, the heart of our city, the heart of Dunwoody. Arriving somewhere, so I, I love the idea of the roundabout at Rob- Roberts, because you're arriving somewhere, it's a sense of place. We're not focusing on throughput of single occupancy, private motorized vehicles. Rather, we're focused on your arriving and slowing traffic and calming it, making it safe, and you're looking around and you, because may have higher density, people may be living all along here, we may have condos, who knows what? But this is gonna be the heart of Dunwoody that we've asked for here. I prefer always, always, always safety as the, always the number one priority for any project for, call this transportation, but is it, is it a, is it a transportation project, is it Dunwoody Village project, is it a people project, right? It's that kind of thing. You know, you know, the, the strong, if you go to the Strong Towns website and you look up Charles Marone Mahone, and he he talks about if you design for people, you'll get people. If you design for cars, you'll get more cars, right? So I want to tweak, but yeah, 90% of this designed for people, people that live within a couple of miles of here make it easier for them and more comfortable and convenient for them to walk or ride their bikes and connective, because it's only, guess what, on a bike, two miles from uh, the Georgetown to Dunwoody Village, when we make that safe, slow person on a bike could get there in 15 or 20 minutes and, and they don't have to worry about parking, right? And if we build that trail network, like we talked about, the, the north-south trail network, so we can get from Hammond Drive through Ashford Dunway up to the village, up to the nature center on a trail. Now I can come from Monkey Way and get to the village without having to get in a car, if it's comfortable and convenient and so on. So, um, that's just kind of the, the, the idea here, um, I love the roundabout, I love the cycle track, I love the wider sidewalks. The, um, just, do we have, now, now I've got, I have a few different questions here. The village, in the village plan itself, we've got a street grid proposed. But I don't see the future street grid proposed overlay with this project. And I don't see especially what we just talked about, the retreat potentially, this is immediate, you know, this is new, new. Talk about that one entryway over by Fresh Market. Well, I think that might be in a proposal that we might be talking to Regency of building a street grid, I don't know where that's gonna come out at on Shambly Dunwoody. And what that's gonna look like if we build that. So let, let's just ask about that one real quick. So let's just ask about that one real quick. If we build that interior grid. And Regent says yes. Where would it come out on Shambly Dunwoody? On the on that, you know, over by the Fresh Market side.
It would. It's probably going to come out somewhere. Probably at the existing opening there. See my mouse, but.
Mm hmm.
Right there. Because that the street grid we're looking at is working with Regency to try to.
Right.
Work within their exist, you know, reconfigure their parking lot. And so there's. Where those streets are going to be is, you know, somewhat confined by where their buildings are. So. It it's probably going to come out in an existing curb cut.
So if that were to be best practice as a. Turning into and out of the village, would we be redesigning that particular intersection to signalize it or something then?
Uh, I don't know. I don't think we would signalize that because it's close to the other signal there. Uh, at shops at Dunwoody. So I I don't, you wouldn't want to add another signal there, but. I mean, that that street grid. Project is. Has the potential to maybe probably to get implemented before this does. So, you know. We will have our this design. Account for whatever comes out of that street grid.
Yeah.
And then for the other street grids shown in the master plan, a lot of those are going to happen through. Redevelopment. So it, you know, it's it's hard to predict and show on here exactly where those streets will end up being. But that's just something that whoever's there second. Will have to. Design for what's already there.
Right. And kind of going back. Go big or go home on the on the Shambly Dunwoody Mount Vernon roundabout, you know? I mean, talk about a gateway. Talk about you've arrived. Talk about putting a big old fountain or something in the middle of that. Yeah, I mean, just it's you got a dream. So if you if you throw a swag out there just to see, um, I'd I'd love to hear about that. And then Nandina push it forward. And also, again, if we do a grid, if we build that grid out in the village. Right? It gives people other ways to move around as well. Right? Or think about that proposed grid line over Mount Vernon where we may have a a way to come into the village without getting down to Shambly Dunwood. If if that future plan comes to fruition there, right? So um, all right, let me see what else. Do 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 do. So this is identified as a ten million dollar transportation project budget number line item number twenty-three. Is this? Let's talk about what like what wouldn't be the next steps. I know we have applied for a grant, correct? Sort of from A R C. What what's the next steps funding? What would that envision like be look like?
We have A R C funding. Now for this, what they call scoping study, basically to develop this concept. The the next step, once we have a. You know, a final concept would be go to go back. To A R C in the next, whatever the next cycle is and ask, actually, the city's already funded. Design for this for final design. We could go ahead and design it and then ask. A R C whenever the timing is right for construction money. To to build it, but that, you know, that's this is a big project. That'll be several years down the road.
Right. It it would sort of mirror, except we want to put the utilities underground. It would sort of mirror the timeline or the steps for the Georgetown gateway. Is that kind of sort of?
Yes, and if you want to put the utilities underground, I would probably add like another year.
Well, we or we'd start sooner, right?
Well, I mean, it's good. It'll take.
I know.
Another year probably to add a year to whatever it was going to take to bury the utilities.
And or come up with some extra funding somewhere and maybe we do it ourselves before we wait for the federal funds to bury the utilities.
Well, it it is a funding issue, but it's also like to actually bury the utilities. So like even if we have the money, it's going to take.
Sure.
Longer.
Right, right, right. But I mean, I know there's federal funding and there's strings to tie it, but maybe if we somehow or another didn't have federal funding to bury the utilities. In in are the possible, we could entertain doing that. Earlier.
Yeah, well, we would the burying utilities. I'm not sure we could use federal money for that.
So for our our, if we came with non-federal funds to bury utilities.
We would, I think we might have to do that.
We could potentially do it sooner though. Just just out of the possible, right? Just just throw that out. If we get a final concept designed down and everybody's agreed. And all of a sudden, we found some unencumbered money that we could bear utilities. We could do that sooner if we want.
We could start it sooner. What I'm saying is the 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 actual timeline of construction would take longer because. Because burying utilities take would take longer than moving them.
Got it, got it. Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to do multitasking or whatever, trying to nudge the needle, move it to the left instead of the right. I had a couple of other things um here. So do 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 the idea of the northbound left turn lane uh from Shambly Dunwood down to Mount Vernon, again, the the. A couple of hours of the day in the morning, a couple of hours in the evening. I I realized, you know, traffic is traffic. I mean, Tim Kane, the former. Planning planning guy of Atlanta said, you know what? He wants traffic to come to a standstill. Because then people are going to have to get out of their cars and go use a different means of travel. You know, so you know, that's that's just the other the other way to think about it. But. If we build out that interior grid, I think that would give people a different way of moving around. Um, and the roundabout, of course, if we did a roundabout, you wouldn't need those two left turn lanes, right? If we did a roundabout.
That's right. You you can see here the the roundabout itself would be two lanes.
Yeah.
But then as you, and that's really to accommodate the turning movements, but then as you. Move north like out of the roundabout, it goes back down the one lane. On the.
Right.
Approaches.
Sure. Um, couple, last couple of things. Um, when you first presented this, um, all right, let's just start the easy one, eliminating curb cuts because we know crashes, most crashes occur at intersections. And those are conflict points, as you alluded to. Back, for example, down at Jet Ferry and Dunwoody Club, when when uh City of Sandy Springs proposed that a few years ago to put a roundabout in there. In the Kroger there, they were going to eliminate a curb cut. They put it in their plan. Because it's a safety concern. There's a curb cut really close to the intersection. We've got so many curb cuts in the village, we know that's an issue and 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 it helps if we center and and reduce curb cuts. Have you looked at removing curb cuts and centralizing any of these access points into the village on north and south of Shambly Dunwood?
Not yet. That's something we'd look at when we get in more into the design. I mean, one of the things, and we found this with the Gateway Project is. Depending on the business and the. What the property looks like, it gets really expensive sometimes to eliminate the curb cuts because it changes. The op- it could, in some cases, it changes the operation of a business and then you have to pay. You know, damages for that, but that's something that we could look at. As we get into it further.
Yeah, especially if we if we build that interior little bit of grid inside Regency, we've got literally, what is it? Hundred fifty feet to the to the, uh, you know. I guess it's north, you know, there's another curb cut and then you got, it's just, there's just so many. So I'd love to have that written down somewhere. And the last thing, mid-block crossings for pedestrians in here. I don't see any mid-block pedestrian access points that are just currently at those intersections. I'd love to see. See some incorporated in there. And I like to see them raised crossings because that's, let's, you know, if we design the in the roadway for fifteen mile an hour, they'll drive slower, right? And it pass ra- raised crossings and more pedestrian crossings. Um, can can we look at mid-block crossings in there, Michael, as well and have them raised as well?
We can look at mid-block crossings, the the raised part. You know, that's that's up to the council. I mean, that's. A pretty major road, so you know. It's going to impact. Emergency services and things like that. I mean. You know, it. That's a kind of a policy decision, I think.
Or and also consider raised intersections, raising the whole intersection of Dunwoody Village Park and Shambly Dunwoody. Raising the intersection over by that ch- Chevron across from the Old Burger King. So the whole rate, it's like a table, if if effect the whole intersection, just another thing about traffic calming. Slowing the cars and letting people know they've arrived somewhere instead of they're on the way through there. So. All right, I'll I'll stop rambling on here now, but um, again, thank you so much for the time, Michael, and I'm, it's a great project and, you know, looking forward to.
John.
Moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Michael, for the presentation. Um, if. Our traffic comes to a standstill, I think the city of Dunwoody will stagnate. There's plans that were passed for greater density. We need to be careful about what we're doing. I am fully. Excited about the safety improvements. But I'm hearing concerns from my other council members, as I have them, that we are doing almost nothing when it comes to transportation throughput. My hope is that we would find ways in which to do incremental improvements, um, some of which um I have minor questions on. If I could, if we look at the current plan as you're going forward now with Nandina. And you compare the Nandina throughput of the uh roundabout. Do I see an extra lane for Nandina going on to Mount Vernon? Why can't we do that currently with the current plan as well?
Are you talking about the roundabout here?
I'm looking at the roundabout at the the main roundabout at Shambly Dunwoody, Mount Vernon. Do I see an extra lane? Coming off Nandina onto Sh- Mount Vernon?
I don't think so. I think this is showing basically Nandina would become one way and it would be. You know, it would just serve the movement of people going shamefully down to Mount Vernon.
So it goes from two-way to one-way, and that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there any way in which we would, I know Dunwoody United Methodist entrance is right there. And I really don't want to impact that as well, but is there any way or thoughts that we could have that extra lane going on to Mount Vernon? Uh, from Nandina coming from a complete stop and then. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of more throughput from Nandina, which would lower the, which would increase the throughput from that intersection at Shambly Dunwoody, Mount Vernon.
I think. I have to go back and look at it, but I think man, because Nandina is fairly long, it can store a lot of cars. So I don't think the the issue there, like in the morning, is that. Nandina causes backups on Shambly Dunwood. It's more the Mount Vernon intersection itself because you've got a. You've got a meter, you've got heavy traffic on Mount Vernon and Shambly Dunwood. You've got to try to balance that.
Okay, that feeds into my next question. Have we ever thought of putting a light at Nandina, a second light at Nandina and have them paired? So that. More throughput can be gone onto both of them turning right. Does that make any sense? Is there any way, does there any feasibility of putting a light at Nandina paired with Shambly Dunwood for improved throughput?
Oh, so that. So that when. Mount Vernon is, I guess, red for westbound traffic, it'd be green for Nandina.
I'm just trying to look at options.
I I think the, I had to go back and talk to the traffic engineers, but I think the biggest issue there is not Nandina so much as. People continuing south on Shambly Dunwood, having to get across Mount Vernon or turn left on the Mount Vernon, but mainly going across, I think. Because they've they've got their held up. Because you got to serve the Mount Vernon. Heavy westbound traffic, but. There, you know, they, we looked at. A lot of different iterations. Base uh similar to what we have here. Burying combinations. And the we really only presented these two because they, the the rest of those combinations didn't really provide much different benefit. These were really. The the two that and plus the roundabout that kind of captured. Everything. So so we looked at probably nine or ten different scenarios.
Right. Well, Catherine raised some great points when it comes to the lack of left hand turns or the cutting off coming out of the village, which then forces more cars to other exits. Or back exits or back entrances of the village. And then um. There was a great comment about a additional lane coming from Shambly Dunwood, turning near Marlow's aspect. I think Stacy made that. I guess my thought is that I would want. To look at the incremental improvements to traffic flow first. Find where you can put a little extra lane and extra improvements somehow, some way, and then build. The safety factors, you know, get the right of way for those incremental improvements that you think we're going to need for a ten-year improvement. Or should it be a twenty-year improvement? I don't know, but. From there, I would want some incremental traffic improvements first, and then we build the safety aspects around it. Second, it looks like we're building the safety aspects without looking at any incremental, which I think is short sighted personally. The roundabout at Roberts is that the two lane versus four lane, Roberts and Shambly Dunwood are not a truck lane. What? So we're looking for, so there's no. Why would it have to be a two lane going around there?
That that's if you project out. Long term. Eventually, the traffic would be at a level where it probably justify two lanes, but. You know, looking at the short term horizon, which I have to go back and look if we're talking. I mean, we're talking at least ten years that it would operate as a single lane roundabout.
I just see that roundabout being a double lane being over engineered versus the village, which is being tightened with. Safety, pedestrian bicycle safety, but not adding any throughput for, to me, it seems. Just a little bit backwards. As far as the. Roundabout. It looks like we're going to have to take that whole triangle if we were to go to the roundabout at Shambly Dunwood, Mount Vernon. The amount of land. I would want to protect the farmhouse. It looks like the farmhouse is still being impacted, or at least the big trees being impacted. Was there any way in which we, if we wanted to do a roundabout, think big, as somebody said. If we want to do the roundabout at Shambly Dunwood, Mount Vernon, is there a way to put the roundabout over, let's say, right over the Dunkin' Donuts right now? Is there a way to shift it to the to the right? And still make it work?
I I'm not sure you could do that, but I think what you may be able to do is you could. Shift it away from the farmhouse. You're you're pro- it's not shown with a red dot here, but the gas station. Across from the Dunkin' Donuts, you're going to end up, even in this drawing, you'd have to buy that property.
Right. And that's why I'd want to take that off the table. I'd want to take the farmhouse house off the table. If we're forced to buy. The Nandina triangle, let's call it, can we move the roundabout over the triangle in any way, shape, form or?
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look at that. I'm I'm not sure, um, but. We can go back and look and say, okay. Can we, can we just impact that quadrant of the intersection?
Again, I'm positive for all the safety improvements and I'm thankful for the work that's been done. I'm just worried that. I mean, I do not want to call this lipstick on a pig because there's sure some great improvements, but I think we need to worry about the traffic throughput. A certain extent and then add safety into that. When we're spending this amount of money to do this type of work, I really would like some incremental places. Of throughput where it makes sense, and I'm not seeing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael, and I'm going to come to an important question at the end of my questions. So the. I actually think it would be good to funnel people to exits with lights. You know, they're leaving the shopping center. Nothing messes up Shambly Dun- I shouldn't say nothing, but. A big impact in Shambly Dunwood is when people are turning left with no light either from either side. So in front of Publix. I'd love to work with Regency to not allow left turns out of that one that's right there in the dry and, you know, what, because they can just go to the road, which has a light. And they might have to wait a second, but it is much less impactful to the flow of traffic than someone. Peaking out so that some and someone waits for them, which is so lovely because we're a very kind community, but it just mucks up traffic. And so if we could work to a plan with our partners in the village so that. We encourage and funnel everyone to the point where they can get a a light to turn left. Would be really helpful, I think. And I did myself because I know what I know, I almost never attempt a left where there's no light. So I have no problem going to Dunwoody Village Drive. I have no problem going to, I don't know what the street name is, maybe it's still Dunwoody Village Drive on the public side. But I have no problem with that. I think it's actually good traffic management as well. I think anytime someone stops to let somebody in for a left turn. You know, it's lovely, it's kind, but it mucks up everybody behind them. The village, from a traffic perspective, is particularly nightmarish on the weekends. I know you and I have briefly conversed about it. But I do know that the research shows that when you fix the roads for traffic, you just get more traffic. And so I I'd like us to take some time and try to figure out. What that looks like. Um, I think there were plenty of comments in the study about please don't make it better so that people just continue to cut through. You know, I'd like to make it worse so people don't cut through. Then the um. Can't totally read my handwriting. I think burying lines is a really good idea, but I think that as we approach the time when it's time to start making decisions, we need a really clear understanding of. how much time that's going to add to the project. So right now, right away, you know, the utility work is usually 18 months and that's not bearing the lines. And in addition though, I'm also reluctant to start bearing the lines until we know the construction's going to start because as someone who's kind of living through the Georgetown project on a day-to-day basis, the impact of all that is tremendous. So we got to start, once we start, and I like your idea of doing it by segments, but once we start, we need to start with a plan to finish. So we need to, where possible, we need to avoid some of the delays because of X, Y, Z. Then there was, I didn't totally, the Nandina and the, the traffic circle, the second one, not the one at Shambly Dunwoody and Mount Vernon. But the Roberts, that's fine, I wouldn't, you know, I'd like to see, tight data on how long we really think it'll be till we need a second lane. I'd hate to build it and then six years later have it fail because it's not big enough. And so that leads me to my question, I think that's all I had. You know, to me, again, a limit, you know, I understand, and you and I have briefly talked about like, go big and go home and how much it's going to cost, but everyone on this, up here needs to understand that when you buy, when a business, when you buy land that an active business is on, it's, you're not just paying for the land. You're paying for the revenues of that business. And so as I understand it, someone correct me if I'm wrong, no one's going to correct me because I'm not wrong. And so we need to, at some point, we need a discussion that's, that we get answers to our questions, but the answers need to be cold, hard facts. No painting over the reality. And so that leads me to my question, which is, is what's next? It almost sounds like you have a lot of questions and comments and as a reminder, everyone is just one vote up here, so. But what's next? Should we have a workshop on this? Specific project, Eric? I mean, Michael, you tell us what you need from us because I don't think you got tons of clear instructions today.
I, I'll tell you what I think I heard and you tell me if.
Okay, good luck.
As, as with the public, it, it sounds like for the corridor itself, the streetscape, there's pretty good consensus on what we're proposing for that. There seems to be pretty good support for looking at the roundabout at Roberts as its own project. The, the question, I guess, really is, and is what, what to do about the traffic and, you know, I'm hearing incremental improvements and things like that, so I don't think anybody, I'm not hearing anybody say we should, you know, four lane, Mount Vernon or, maybe even add extra lanes, so. So maybe looking closer at the roundabout at Mount Vernon is, you know, that's, that's the only additional option that doesn't involve, that has a major traffic impact that doesn't involve adding through lanes on Shambly Dunwoody. So.
I think you did very well. So our instructions to, to Michael are to go back and look at the roundabout. I think, go ahead.
And that's, and that's fine, Mary. What I was gonna say was, I mean, going back to your original idea, if you want to have a little bit more in-depth on this, because you have a lot of different, it, it's a very.
I think we need more information. I think we can't, there's no reason to rehash this. Well, cost and time, but also the phase, Joe said phasing, but also figuring out, like if the Roberts traffic circle is really viable and if this potentially attract, potentially, potentially, a traffic circle might make sense at Mount Vernon and Shambly Dunwoody and what that would require. I think, I think if we could get some of the big questions answered first, particularly the traffic circle ones, it probably makes sense to do that, like come back to us with that. And then we can go from there, I think. Does anybody else disagree?
And, and while we're doing that, just to make sure, you, you don't want us to go any further on some of these other turn lane options. We're really, at Mount Vernon, we're really just looking at the roundabout.
I don't know. First do the roundabout and then come back and see what we understand about traffic. And it would, it would be interesting to, like the traffic data you showed, was that from 2022?
No, it was pre-pandemic.
So I think it's worse somehow or another.
It probably is because of all the construction.
What'd you say? Right, and so maybe it's not worse.
Probably a little bit of both.
Right.
That and all the construction 400, I think.
Yes, we, and, and the weekend, just to be clear, the weekend issue actually predates at least the closures on 400 and 285. And maybe some of that is because of the, even back then was the, was construction. But I just think people are coming and going. And again, to everyone's point up here, it's possible that I forgot what it was like in 2019, let's be honest. But if we could just, you know, I, I know a lot of people are trying to do traffic modeling post-pandemic and, and I know that nobody thinks it's going to be really accurate. Yet, because we don't know who's going back when. But if there's signs in that data that we're having major shift, and new data, maybe major shifts, we need to look at that. But I think the first task is to come back with the traffic circles, is that, I'm sorry, roundabouts. And then come back with those. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just one comment to on, because I don't know if I, matter of fact, I know I didn't make it clear when I was speaking. The, the, the Shambly Dunwoody, Mount Vernon roundabout. I'd like to know if Nandina is even necessary if we do a, a proper roundabout there. And, and that way we could push those businesses back. I, I alluded to that, but I don't think I clearly stated that. So I, I think if we have a good roundabout there, I don't know that Nandina is necessary anymore, so that might be alleviate some of the pain there.
So I think we've given you something to work on.
Yes.
And then I know, the other thing with the bearing the lines is it, is it maybe we do it in a key segment, you know, from the corner to the edge of the commercial area or something and not, go pass, go up towards the library, all that, maybe we can shrink the impact. Because today, just, I mean, in Georgetown, it's kind of constant, right? So the water issues, for those of you who don't know, we're, we've had a few, there's been a few issues with water pipes. And businesses are really being pretty significantly impacted because the water has to be cut off. It's cut off either because we damage it, I'm not we, but it gets damaged or because it has to be turned off to make the unexpected repair or an expected shift of pipes. And so, you know, we don't want to be, I have a friend in a, in a decap city that'll remain unnamed and the, the road through their, in the edge of their town is not theirs, but it's a state highway. And it's just, businesses are just hanging on threads because it's taken so long. So we'll get to all that later, but I think the initial instruction is the roundabout, roundabout studies or whatever you need to do.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Plato. And, and this is, you'll bring this back to us at your convenience, Michael, and when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to talk about the potential contract for financial advisory services. So early there, this year in January, we issued an RFP to qualified vendors for our financial service, financial advisory services. And some of the services this would include is the assistance of issuing bonds, financial advice regarding market conditions and trends, review and evaluation of current financial policies and participation in collaboration with some of our capital planning needs. So we received three proposals to it. We narrowed the list, the review committee of five narrowed the list down to two and we interviewed those two. Based on the results of the interview, we were really impressed with the qualifications and experience of Davport and company. And that's the one that we are recommending to award it to. It would be a multi-year contract, so we do for one year and then it automatically knew for four additional years. Their fee is obviously based on the amount of the bond issued, $30,000 is the minimum. $80,000 would be the maximum and they also have a $300 per hour rate for work outside of transaction work, basically. So that's all our goal in this is if it is approved, putting on the consent agenda for April 11th. We'd like to have them come in, April 25th meeting and kind of walk through a bond calendar and some of the steps and everything.
So we have a really heavy agenda already for that meeting, so we'll discuss and figure out when they can come in and discuss things, but that would probably not be the meeting. At, at least if I can say something. So, okay, all right, any questions? When you bring this back, would it be appropriate for you to share the scoring sheets? Often in our agenda items, we have the scoring sheets.
Sure, absolutely.
Joe.
When, when is the proposed vote on this?
Next, April 11th.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
So I, I, I read in the packet, it's a one-year contract with four additional rollover 12-month periods. I just want to make sure the record's clear, you have to have an annual way out of those. And I think that's probably what's going to be in the contract, but just to make sure the record's clear.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Is this okay for consent? Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I actually have the next.
You do have the next one. Go right ahead.
We, we work with the police department, we've identified five vehicles that reached the end of their useful life. And we are proposing here to, to have council declare them a surplus and we will dispose, sell them as we see fit and necessary as best way possible.
Anybody have questions? John?
Yes, sir, can you just remind us on how those are disposed? I'm guessing it's a public website or an auction of some sort, just.
Correct.
You're not buying one, are you?
Well, if I can save up, no. We, we're, in this instance, we are actually, the Pickens County DA has requested one of them. But normally speaking, we have a GovDeals is the website that we use to list upon.
Okay, yeah, I know in the past we have had other municipalities or police departments who, we got into an agreement with them for a certain price or a certain, you know, vehicle. So we're doing that on one and then we're putting them on the public auction or the website. What was the name of it one more time?
GovDeals.
GovDeals, all right, thank you, sir, that's all I need to know, I appreciate you, thank you so much.
Anybody have anything else? Is this okay for consent? Okay, so consent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCloy, the Front Yard Tree Program, exciting.
Yes, finally. So we're, we're introducing tonight a basic agreement between Trees Atlanta and the city. As you all called, you all dedicated $10,000 to go towards this effort. They will plant up to two trees per lot. So it's a total of 40 trees that we have. Each tree is about $250. We've decided on white oak, southern red oak, willow oak, schumark oak, nettle oak, maple, river birch, black gum and bald, bald cypress. So it's a list, they have different spreads and whatnot, depending on where they're going. They'll go out and the client will pick one of those and they'll be advised on the conditions, whether it, it'll go. So the service agreement is with Trees Atlanta, they will provide all the output. They'll advertise on their website, they'll collect payment and whatnot. They'll, those bill us for the end of the term, so.
I have questions. So I actually randomly get emails about this, not because they know we're getting ready to do it, but because some of our neighboring cities are doing it and they see it. So what's our process going to be for selection? Like is it first come, first served? Is it going to be, yeah?
Yes, it's first come, first served.
Okay. And then how, you're going to work with Jennifer Betcher and to come up with a plan on how to communicate it? And how far in advance are we planning on releasing this?
We will probably start now.
Once is the contract assigned?
So we want to be prepared before October.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I hope that we'll, we're going to go through it in one month or two.
Yeah, and then river birch is a native tree? Are those all native trees?
I believe so.
Okay. And who digs the hole for the homeowner? Does the homeowner dig the hole? So Trees Atlanta does everything.
And it includes a two-year warranty, so they'll come back and play us if it is damaged except for car wrecks and
So let's say that they get, everybody does it and we're done in a week or two weeks. If we chose to allocate funding, if we, if we chose to allocate funding for say, are they in a capacity to do more this year or we'll just have to wait and see?
So the biggest issue with them is, is getting the trees.
Yes, okay, so they may not be able to. But then we could know to expand it the next year if we chose to. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Go ahead, Rob.
I, I, when I looked through this earlier, I didn't see anything. You talk species, what about like caliber size? What size trees are these that they're planting?
Don't recall, I think they're either two to four inches. It'll say on their website. So we didn't delve into the website, this is just the strategic plan. If you go to their website, I think they'll look at the cities and they have notes.
And, and then maybe piggybacking on Lynn's with a question that's more of a comment, I guess. So we're not targeting this towards any particular streetscapes that we think could use some front yard trees or just kind of whoever gets to the website that day and.
And again, it's front yard trees because it's private property, so it's beyond our streetscape, it's.
What, viewscape then?
Correct.
The, the street viewscape is what I'm getting at. There's no stretches where we think, well, we could use a few more trees somewhere along this road that we're trying to.
We do have the Tree City USA funds, the Public Works has, and we have developer contributions in our, my tree fund, so we could choose for that as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Catherine. How are you going to determine eligibility? I mean, which party is doing that? You know, if the topography doesn't lend itself.
Trees Atlanta handles all that. They will look at, at it, determine if it's a go, no go. One of the concerns that we have is that it's off the property lines and of course underground utilities because there's a lot of utilities that stormwater lines and whatnot. So just depends on the exact.
And overground utilities, are they taken into account?
No, I mean, that wouldn't be allowed in there because those are in, mostly in the right of way.
Okay, so there'd be a portal, I'll just sign up, they'll come evaluate and then it goes forward from there.
Yeah, it's the same.
And is there a wait?
Everybody goes to for all the cities, Dunwoody, Brookhaven, everyone goes to.
Okay, and you'll have to be a Dunwoody resident? And will they keep a waitlist or something so they get to Catherine's house and it's too stony and they can't dig it?
I will ask them.
I mean, there must be some system because we want to use everyone, if there's demand, we'd like to use all of the trees.
And one thing that the gentleman told me, he said, if you can hold off because he doesn't think we're going to reach it. And I said, I'm, I, I think we will.
Right, and planning and the planting of the trees. Which is huge. Anybody have any other questions? John, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So as far as the right of way, these are forced to be in the right of way or not necessarily?
They're not in the right of way.
Not of right and.
Private property.
Okay, so it's on the property. And if you live on a corner house, does it matter what side it's put on? In other words, it's still front edge to a certain extent.
Yeah, so it'll, it says in there about certain number of feet or from the front side, so you can't put on your back block.
Correct. And as far as city funds are going towards this to a certain extent and the, does this impact our no net loss of trees? Are we using these trees to weigh that aspect?
No, no net loss of trees only applies to city property.
Okay, and every once in a while, I used to ask, where are we on our current no net loss of trees? How many trees does the city right now need to put in to get back to zero at some point?
Yes, I'm sure we have quite a few from the Shambly Dunwoody streetscape that's going on.
Right, so, but those numbers are not going to be impacted by this program. So we still need to put more trees in our parks and in our right of way and other places for the known that loss of trees. Thank you, you've asked.
Don't some cities though use this program? I mean, we would probably need to expand it to make a difference. But don't some cities use this program in their no net loss of trees? Because are we going to run out of room to plant? I mean, right, because I think, right.
But that was my point on the right of way aspect. I mean, if we, let's say we had to put in 200 trees and we wanted to put in cherry blossoms all down, let's say, North Peachtree in the right of way, we could do that as a city.
If the neighbors, right.
Yes, but I mean, you see the point.
No, I see the point. So right now. No, I see the point. So right now, we don't need to do that, but down the road, we may up it to 100 trees as part of our no net tree loss, because you can only put so much shade in Brookrun and everywhere else, right? I mean, Brett could comment.
To change our ordinance instead of just public lands.
Yeah, we would have to address that, so, okay. Yes.
Richard was kind enough to send this to me and they do a good job on the contract. Number one, it does, it is for a longer period of time in the year, but there's a 30-day out for convenience. Number two, under the gratuities clause of the constitution, when you're providing, if you vote on this, you're saying that there's a public benefit and we also benefit from the trees being on private property rather than in our right-of-way. You cannot fund the private improvement of personal property belonging to folks, but you can for a public benefit. If you find that we need more trees, it's better to have them outside the right-of-way. There's maintenance agreements, there's all this other stuff built in these contracts, and Tree Atlanta does a good job. But also, we always look at the size, the spend on this is very nominal comparatively. So we're fine as long as y'all find that there's a public benefit to put in these trees on private property. I would have a concern if it was only going on one person's property, but if it's being spread out, I think you can find a public purpose.
There's a public purpose, right? We're re-treeing Dunwoody from even the tornado all those years ago, so. And plus, we still have homeowners on a fairly regular basis who lose a tree in a light breeze. And so hopefully, some of them will, especially if they were front yard trees, be able to participate in this program. Anybody is consent? Okay, thank you. Public comments. Would anyone like to make a public comment? You'll have three minutes. Ginger or Dustin, can you check online?
If you'd like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Right, and just as a point of information, our emergency ordinance that we've been using to have the virtual public comment, and at the end of the month, as COVID numbers have plummeted, so we will discontinue the Zoom public comment as we march back towards normal. Okay, and with that, city manager comments?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to have an executive session for personnel and litigation. Thank you.
Okay, council comments. Start on this end. So I'd like to take a minute and recognize Brittany Davis in the back, if you'll just stand for a minute. Brittany has been our assistant city clerk for several years and became our sort of interim city clerk, like, just very quickly, way back when, and did everything great and has worked really hard for us and is going to work for a much bigger city, unfortunately, all the way across the country in California. But we are, so we're very proud of you and we're very, very grateful for your service, so thank you and good luck on your future ventures. And with that, I think I need a motion for executive session for personnel litigation.
I move that we go to executive session for purposes of personnel litigation.
I'll second that.
That was moved by Stacy, second by Rob, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed hearing on, we are going to executive session.
I need a motion to adjourn. So moved by Stacy. Second by Jo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I see you next time everybody drive home safely.